... and the construction of the whole...
Mr. Phil, back.
Here.
Mr. Phil, here.
Here. Here. All of the considerations, all of the needs that you're addressing. Second, uh, under two items on the consent items.
Second?
Off the boat.
Thank you, Phil.
There's no voting hearings, there's nothing... or a term until October twenty eighth, two thousand fourteen. Okay, at this time we'll open up the Garden Grove City Council. We have had a steady session, but we have not had the close session that we moved out until April. Yes, we just called, well...
Oh, I'm just...
Here.
Yeah, there it is. Yeah.
And then we'll have the, uh... we'll have the invitation to the shooting in the city, and we'll have the, uh, president of the agency side street. Phil, can I understand that we have a presentation this evening?
Yes, this evening. Good evening. Please people of Garden Grove City Council, please respond in the next box. On the challenge of being seen as being in this Garden Grove, and this Garden Grove housing team, and the... It's helping serve and represent the city, and last month, and it's not one of those towns where... As an official termary, and a merit candidate, in this Garden Grove campus, it's been for the five thousand hours to call. So, yeah, my name is Phil. And this is the one that our participants have been blessed to be part of, based on the fact that they're... Like to have the responsibility to give a speech in the lobby. We asked the city to give a speech at our meeting called "The Garden Grove City." We also asked that I be... In this Garden Grove conference, we have been honored to be part of. Now, since I'm native of Garden Grove, it's a privilege for doctors to be in the community. It's a national honor to be here. I think that is a power one has, like specifically for high school, and she was named, actually, by the... and now she's been a member of the, we've all seen her, she's been a part of... Very very easy to do, it's like just one of the power names, it's one of the... It's one of the two very important things that we have to do. But the power is still there, it's still there. It's not just about the... But the thing is, it's not just about the... It's always been about the... the... This is the one, this is the graduate, and I work on the... I work on the... I work on the... And now the girl who's got the... and now the girl who's... And now the girl who's got the... And now the girl who's got the... And now the girl who's... And now the girl who's... And now the girl who's... And this is the Garden Grove, and also, the... and... This Garden Grove housing team, from just... Very exciting, we're doing our own thing, and we're... and... Very very solid, and... and... There is... There's a cover call, and I'm... And I'll, uh, prepare for the... and... and... I think it's how it's... How their love for this... Jenna Tower is a sophomore at the City Council. She loves to dance and is in the... She was sponsored by Ian Tuck. She's competing for the title of this Garden Grove housing team. And is currently sponsored by... Mother Lucker is a sophomore. She is, uh, both the dance team and the... She was sponsored by the colony. Over the past year, this Garden Grove, this Garden Grove's outstanding team, along with their courts, have participated in a variety of community events and services. These appearances include the 2028 celebration of the Harvard Hospital, and the Garden Grove community foundations, and the... This nine years, the council, uh, has been supporting the following high school and courts. The certificates have amendments, the recognition of their volunteerism, and the... during their... The city council wishes you good luck, and hopes that your aspirations continue. Leading to... Leading you to recognize the citizens of Garden Grove.
At this time of... ...... Scott Coleman? I'm here to reiterate, I'd like to say everybody, leadership, within the market. Last year, we have thoroughly documented our issues with the underprivileged, and the fire chief. Earlier this year, we did the first time market study. Market centers were expressed in the general office of the fire chief. Today, we will have a plan, and a solution, and we will give any direction needed. We feel that a manic, supportive investigation will reveal that the fire chief does not have as supportive a deal, including some members of the firm. A change is needed for citizens and members to show confidence in the fire chief. Every day, the committee is helping work, the pressure is strong. We look every day, we force to work under a leader that we have no confidence. We need to, uh, make minimal out of this, and to the lack of... establish the policies of these people. We feel public safety, public trust, we want to reconstruct it. We have, and we will continue to be, uh, about to establish it. We need to see a rate, and we need to see anticipation, but we said a written report, and that's what we're... other brothers asked, and that's what we're... we're all... that's what we're... I'm sure you are aware, large families have unfortunate children who struggle with challenges. What you might not be aware of, is in the month of August, Garden Grove firefighters have put some heat feature to replace your normal roof insurance, and support the rest of your... In addition to wearing these features, you can find a naked feature today on the... all posts, and it's all... Along with the pink features, many of the firefighters are anticipating... and... This contest, this contest evolved, anticipating members throwing out a mustache, which will... judges choosing multiple... Based on a lot of different places. Once again, all posters raised from yesterday, going into the city, and the... The judging this schedule will take place November second, and on the rocks, Bargill located in... off Downing Street, and at, uh, which is... We'll be reaching out to the citizens of Garden Grove, sitting in a... most expensive... Uh, one other thing happening, uh, this Thursday, is Mark, he... helping us, or helping us out, so... Maybe you know, it's a not popular organization, and price never shows, and it's... a whole lot of... The honor of being associated with this group is to be a firefighter, if you're bored of... the foundation of... Once again, uh, the council, the law, the... Not only just problems, but the life itself, and the... burned up by a... ... In that report, he was talking about, did somebody first get that... for the... kind of... I don't know, it turned me off, something, like, being right. Good evening, Mayor, Council, and citizens of Garden Grove. Thank you all for being here and participating in local politics. Okay, with all due respect, Mayor, City Manager, we've, uh, I've got some huge issues with this, uh, paper, the United Espionage Report. It's, uh, very important. If you haven't read it, or got to see it, I'll be happy to let you guys look at that. I hope you read it closely, because it's another... It's like the continuing black eye from last week, the last, uh, community game. Uh, it continues, and it just seems like it gets worse. Mr. Phil, you told us your report, that you personally requested that this company... Sir, can I ask you, could we... So this constant report, that was chosen by Mr. Phil... For some reason, no written report, for twenty-four thousand dollars, and we can't even hit print? Wow, that's just amazing. I mean, what is, what is this, what is this for? Verbal only, we're gonna pass on the information over a cocktail, or a jar of bars somewhere? This just sounds a bit... There's no accountability, there's nothing that goes down on record. It's just an oral communication done, I mean, with no record of it. This is twenty-fourteen, there's no excuse for that. That, it seems so shady. This is just terrible, this thing should be, uh, put on the city website, word for word. And, and you know, Mr. Phil, I know you thought, you know, the firemen might be biased or something, in this... in this report, but, you know, if you want this report to come out the way you wanna see it, that's... this is how it looks, how it would go down. This just does not look good for us, this looks pretty, uh... pretty bad. So, why on earth wasn't it written down? Why is it maybe gonna be available to... Why is that even a question? Why is it not available to the public, public service? We deserve to know this stuff. Should we trust this recording? Does this, you know, design reflect a certain outcome, the way we wanted it to seem? We deserve so much, but... Peter Cass?
Good evening, Council, staff, everyone. Tonight, I wanna talk just a little bit about money, for soldiers' fortune. You know, soldier writes a blind check sometimes, and sometimes pays the ultimate price, and costs his life. Last night, our troops were in harm's way over the Persian Gulf. In a six-hour period, forty-six Tomahoff missiles were fired from the Red Sea and Persian Gulf. These missiles cost the taxpayer two point four billion dollars per missile. So freedom is not free. There are sacrifices, but it shows working together how things can be accomplished. Six Arab nations, two NATO nations, are participating in this, uh, action. Over the weekend, I watched a brilliant documentary that should be shown in all Mexican schools and all US schools. It's about the two-hundred-first Air Force squadron of Mexico. That President Roosevelt secretly traveled to Mexico to get Mexican Air Force pilots trained in the United States, flying the Mexican flag, to help liberate the Philippines under General McCarver. This brilliant cooperation between the nations, uh, shows how unity... I just thought that, and it's a shame, that it took this many years for this story to... So, these soldiers were trained in Idaho, and were spelled... And they did brilliant missions, they had lost planes, novel missions, and they were... to liberate, and help cover for US troops that were on the ground. I bring this up because in this city, with a council that is working together, you look at the tourist development on Marver Boulevard, and now makes up twenty-five percent of this city's budget. I attended the San Francisco Council meeting last night, and since I already sat at my side, in this city, we're giving the highest compliment by councilmember, Miss Somy, and Josephine. Take a look at Garden Grove, it's doing what that council is doing for our part of the world, because we're underutilized, and so they wanna work in a better relationship, this is, to point the... burger, to increase tourist dollars, and to get in happiness. So, well, we gotta bed tonight, our soldiers and our parents, as we...
You need to be demanding like yesterday. Thanks for your time.
Good evening, Council, Mayor, and residents of Garden Grove. My name is Sherri Williams and I'm a 36-year resident of Garden Grove. I come tonight to address three issues with you. The first is regarding the new street signs that were installed recently. I've notified the proper city department by phone call with just a message left, but I received no response. The sign on Tamer Lane near Harbor and Suntree is spelled wrong with two M's instead of only one. And the other sign spelled wrong is Ortley, which is spelled with an L-Y instead of an E-Y. Those are just two in my neighborhood and I hope that it will be corrected and hopefully there aren't any more across the city. The second issue is the intersection of Blue Spruce and Harbor. This is a T-intersection. Years ago, the city built a block wall along the east side of Harbor from about Palm for Hampson. I do not know if they built it on city property or private property, but I would assume it would have been on public property. Because the height of the block wall south of Blue Spruce caused visibility problems when people turning onto Harbor, the city removed two layers, uh, two rows from that block wall. By lowering the height of the wall, visibility was heightened and thus accidents occurred at this intersection. About two years ago, a new owner of the house at the corner of Blue Spruce and Harbor added wrought iron to this block wall. The city has also increased the number of traffic lanes from two to three, causing the third lane to be directly along the curb. These two items have created a large blind spot, particularly due to the added wrought iron. Cars and even buses can be visibly lost in that curb of the street from Palm to Blue Spruce for several seconds. Accidents have increased, two occurring within the last few weeks alone. There's been a single car accident involving a Garden Grove PD officer, which I'm sure was caused by a car turning in front of him while he was in a blind spot on Harbor. Although code enforcement has researched this intersection and states that it is in compliance with the city's intersection's sight-to-distance formula and the proper measure of safety, I request that you look beyond your formulas and think of the safety of the residents and the visitors of the city. It's only a matter of time, especially as traffic increases on Harbor throughout our new district and new hotels, that another accident will occur and someone will be greatly injured or killed. My third issue is in regard to the city manager obtaining a $24,000 audit regarding the Garden Grove Fire Department. And hopefully, this has now been resolved. But having the results set up for the audit previously presented to him only verbally, I believe this would be absolutely preposterous. The results need be in writing. I contend that without a written audit, there is no proof that any audit was ever performed and therefore, no money should be paid to the supposed auditing company. Thank you.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Mr. Council. Uh, sorry it takes me twice as long to do anything as missing one of the members, but... Um, this night out, this evening, I'm here on behalf of the California Drivers Alliance, where a nonpartisan organization of, uh, act of, uh, trade organizations, chambers of commerce, elected officials, business organizations, and non-officials throughout the state of California, fighting against a new fuel practices pending as of January 1st. In 2006, the California State Legislature passed the Global Learning Solutions Act, AB 32, which allowed for cap and trade policy to be enacted throughout the state. In doing so, it allowed for the power to levy taxes on fuel to be given to the California Resources Board, an unelected board, to be able to levy taxes in the amount of 16 to 76 cents per gallon, uh, again, starting January 1st. Uh, this is happening, uh, right now and we're looking for support of, uh, elected officials as well as members of council and, uh, eventually this, uh, this body to support the California Drivers Alliance in trying to defeat this really, really damaging tax. Um, I have provided each of you a copy of both our literature as well as sample resolution language that we'd like to have passed, um, essentially stating that we'd like transparency in the process by which this tax is imposed. Right now, the California Resources Board's like, "Well, let me ask them the question."
Article that came out yesterday, uh, which is about the, um, $24,000 spent on an investigation, uh, for the Garden Grove Fire Department. I have a couple of things to say. First and foremost, the five-to-one vote of no confidence in Fire Chief David Barlag, um, which reveals no, uh, low morale, lack of leadership, and favoritism in promotions, among other things. As a person who has worked in the private sector or worked in the private sector for many, many years and having had the misfortune of working with a lot of lack of leadership, leadership and low morale, I can tell you that my days were horrible. I hated getting up in the morning. I hated going to work. Our firemen save our lives. As citizens, we depend on them on a daily basis to, um, be ready to save our lives. I cannot imagine that, how they must feel when they know that they have such responsibility on their shoulder, yet they come to work. And more than anything, that there's favoritism. It is a terrible environment to work under and I'm hoping and I... ...by the city and as our representatives to do something about it. Um, like everybody else, I do want to see a report because I find it preposterous that no report was, um, requested to begin with. I am very happy, Mayor Broadwater, that you have requested it, but, um, again, it is appalling that it wasn't requested to begin with, um, especially paying $24,000 for it. Um, Mayor Broadwater, I believe that, um, you should recuse yourself from the argument because it, it does involve a direct, um, family member of yours and there appears to be, um, severe allegations about it. Um, so, uh, I think that it, it is your duty not to be involved in the discussion. And for the rest of the council members, I do expect you as well to, um, respect the public's opinion and again, as our representatives and as public officials, to see the best for our city, um, demand transparency and, um, make that report public. And anything that has to do with anyone's performance that should be kept confidential, then, uh, it could be taken out of the report, but everybody else should be able to see. It is coming out of our dollars and it should be public for everybody. Thank you.
Baowen.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the council. My name is Baowen. I'm currently trustee on the Garden Grove Unified School District Board of Education. Today, I'm here as an individual and as a resident of Garden Grove. I'd like to introduce myself to those who aren't familiar with me. I was born in a refugee camp. My parents had escaped Vietnam in the middle of the night through an underground passageway. They risked their life and my mom was eight months pregnant. She risked her life and the life of her unborn child to be in this country. We came to the U.S. when I was three months old. I grew up in Garden Grove. I'm a graduate of Pacifica High School, proudly Go Mariners. And I want our city to be the best that it can be. We look at the talents that we have in our community, the investments we've made in the success of our kids, but we really don't see them. And when they continue their investment into higher education and come back to Garden Grove, there's not much here for them. And I'm happy to see that there's been a survey that's been issued today with the city manager and our superintendent in Garden Grove Unified to learn what will it take to bring the kids back home? And then, at the same time, I see that these kinds of politics that are going on in the city and the lack of leadership by our mayor is definitely concerning because that turns off people because there's no trust in our city government. So I'm counting on the members of the council because you're for, you're the majority, to really bring to light these issues and concerns that we have before us. This is a serious matter. I know that as a school board member, when we vote on all hiring, it comes across us. We know whose name is on the record right there and we have to vote on it. I'm wondering if, Mayor, you voted to hire your own son and did not recuse yourself from that vote, the initial vote. As a public official, you know better. With regards to the $24,000 investigation, obviously, that investigation is not going far enough. We need further investigations to root out any kind of fraud and abuses that are going on in this city. This seems to be just the tip of the iceberg. And I'm counting on our city leadership, the remaining four, because at this point, I have lost faith in our mayor. So, please, go back, make sure that the report is in writing, make sure that it details everything that we need to know to make sure that these abuses do not happen. This is not Garden Grove. Garden Grove is not a Mayberry. We are 175,000 people in this city. We can't be acting like a Mayberry. We are a large, diverse community. We can be a thriving economy if we take a look at the talent that we have in Garden Grove rather than just focusing on the developments. And yes, Mayor, you've done good. You've cleaned up Harbor Boulevard, but you've forgotten the rest of us. 22 years in City Hall, sir, that's quite some time. That's a lot of time that you've neglected us. So I asked the council, this is the beginning, $24,000. Will we get our money's worth in an oral report? We definitely need it in writing and we need to continue the investigations. Make sure that we hold all of our leaders accountable and make sure that our government is transparent. There's technology available to be an open government. We can have it on the website. We can do these things and I urge you to. Thank you.
Okay, my name is Rod Powell. I deserve to go last tonight, even though I was one of the first because I cheated last week and went first. Thank you.
It won't happen again.
Can I ask one of you two to answer a question honestly? Is he playing with his cellphone? Is he playing with his cellphone? Is Steve playing with his cellphone right there? We deserve better than that. He's getting $150 for tonight. And every night, that's six, seven thousand dollars a year. I know that's not a lot of money to you, but that's what we're paying him to play with his cellphone, never contributing anything, ever. You know, I, I had no intention on picking on him, but I've sat here and what's obvious to me, you play with your cellphone. Uh, Tony's right, that ain't right. Anyways, I spent a minute of my time because of that and so I'm not happy about that. But my first thing I want to say is, if you get off the 22 freeway where it's, uh, heading west at Euclid, you'll see a mosaic there that Robin put together. And I see that every, I get off, every Monday, I come back from San Ana and get off at Euclid to go to Costco and have a chocolate sun, uh, you know, thing. And, um, I see that, it's just so beautiful. She does that for this city, you know, usually at her own cost. And, um, secondly, I wanted to say, as was pointed out by Linda, um, thank, thank God for the fire, firemen, um, what an honorable profession that is. And, um, I thank all of them too. I'm going to move forward briefly on the nepotism. It's not rocket science. Inherently, you have an advantage if your father's the mayor when you're trying to get one of 10 positions out of 500 inherently, right? So it's not hard to figure out why Chief Barlag felt pressure. I don't want to make any accusations as though there was pressure put on him by anyone. I don't know that. Uh, only the parties involved would know something like that. But even without that kind of pressure, there's still pressure. I feel sorry, the guy must have felt tremendous pressure because it's, you know, the way that he, as it says in the paper, slid through what most people wouldn't have to get hired. Uh, I feel sorry for the guy that just missed out. The main thing is, I wanted to talk about, uh, Mayor and it's soon to be, hopefully, Mayor Baowen. This council, uh, as he said, a council of, of five people, and yet it's always been really one. You know, you're, you got a, Mayor Broadwater, you have a personality that's intimidating. You're an intimidating guy. And I, I, I even, I, I don't like to be intimidated. I'm not intimidated any longer. I'm coming out of my shell. And, um, but I mean, you told me Robin was not getting on this council. You told me right outside the day that we were having the, when she was to be considered, when Andrew Doe split. And I, I, I found, I watched it on TV later and, uh, the way that it went down, you know, I didn't like the way that she was called to be voted on and all of a sudden, "Oh, wait, 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 we've got one more." You remember, you, you pointed that out? I blame you two for that. You especially made sure that Chris Beard got voted first and, "What? Wow, he's in." Just like that. She never even got considered, even though she was the one that, according to the referendum, should have been the first one considered, you know? But you come back with this convenient answer of, "That was just, uh," what's, what's the word for it? It was just, uh, it was, it wasn't something passed, it was just a recommendation. You know, so I didn't like that then, I don't like it now. That hurt her a lot, I know that. You know, and you knew she was the best person for the job and this, but she wasn't the yes person you were looking for. You wanted someone that would get along and go with the flow. And the same thing, he doesn't, no, no offense, but Chris Beard did not get elected the next time. He didn't even get elected without, and though he has now a branded name, he's on the ballot, you know, to the layperson that doesn't understand. They see somebody with their name as current council member, they get a lot of votes for, because of that. Still didn't get elected. Fat Bowie came down here, wanted to get that position, position. He was the one that was the next one, uh, and should have been, according to that recommendation, the one picked. Again, how does he keep getting on here? Because you want him on here that bad. That is one of the reasons primarily, in addition to other things, but that's, that we need a new mayor. I, I actually think you should withdraw your candidacy. And that's all I got.
We're going to take five minutes. Scott Coleman, I'd like you to stick around for a minute.
Scott Coleman, I'd like you to stick around for a minute.
How old am I? How many years?
Okay. I'm just impressed.
How old am I? How many years?
We're going to take five minutes. Scott Coleman, I'd like you to stick around for a minute.
It is not a worst. This is good time.
I was fine the way it was.
I like it cool. It makes me...
Okay, we're just gonna...
Consent items.
Okay, we reconvene the city council. Council members, public response to public comments. Dina, you have something for us?
Yeah, go ahead.
Public comment?
Responding to public comments.
Oh, I just want to make something clear. My intent and my expectation was to have a written report. So it's just a matter of timing. I don't want people to think that an oral report would be unacceptable. We do need openness and transparency, so that was the course, and we're going to have it too. Same so if we can manage it in two weeks.
I think Matt said in three weeks.
Yeah.
That is before the election. Um...
Soon.
Oh, thank you.
All right, enough. You guys had your time. Let her finish.
Okay. Before I begin with my public comments, last week I made a statement regarding Tony Flores, and I want to correct that. I thought he was out of the room, but he was in the room, and my statement was towards him, and he was in the room. He didn't leave before I made my statement. As far as... Because a lot of statements has been made today publicly, and a lot has been thrown to the public, and I feel it's my duty to clarify some of it, so it's not muddle or confusing to the public who are watching on TV at home, or maybe seeing some quotes on the newspaper. As far as Broad, Paul, he's one of my favorite guys who come up to speak on the dais, and he has very legitimate things to speak about. But as we grow as a nation, as we grow as a community, we are so much into technology nowadays that the council has notes, have to take notes of things that the public says. So we get these notebooks, and we also have an option of using our iPad or our notepad. And so you eventually will see council using the notepad. It appear to be looking like they're on texting on the phone, but they actually are looking at notes. I remember one council meeting, Member Jones looked at a corporation to see if it was in existence as the corporation was speaking, and sure enough, it wasn't in existence, it was expanded. And it was very useful to him to look for the notes and take notes with his notepad. As far as Linda, I respect her for serving our city on our planning commission. She mentioned some allegations today when she was on the dais. Well, we're not under investigation with any allegation from any public entity. There is a concern from our fire department, and we are looking into those concerns as evident by the report that we have already ordered. And as I stated, and I stated in the register, that that report is very important to us, and that we're going to spend that much money on like a written report. I stated that publicly, and I still stand by my ground on that. And anything after Mr. Tony Flores says about my quote after the word "but," dot, 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 that's not my quote. My quote is up to the word "but" only. So I want to clarify that, and you don't just get to go up here and speak publicly and say, put words into my mouth or what I said in the newspaper. And if anyone wants to know exactly what is said in the newspaper by any of the council members, please refer back to the registers that has the full article that you can go into and look at. And as for Mr. Bowen, he's here every week because he's running for mayor. And he will bring up a lot of issues that he have regarding the mayor position, and I don't believe that he should be using this podium to attack his opponent. This podium is to give information to the public, just as the fire department. They had a representative, they came up here, they were very specific to what they wanted to say, and they wanted the public to know that. Mr. Bowen is here to attack the mayor, and which is not the forum for that. He has to spend money for himself if he wants to campaign. He cannot spend the public money and use this forum to campaign. I don't believe in that, and I believe that the viewer at home should look at what he's doing and all the allegations he's making towards our mayor. I have worked with the mayor for a long time. He has made the city a lot of decisions that has brought us to where we are, a financially stable city. I still believe that he's doing that. There are some issues occurring right now that we need to resolve with the fire department, and we're working towards that. And there's a lot of firefighters out there in the forum right now, just like last week. I want to acknowledge that. I want to acknowledge that we hear you. I want to say that we're looking into what you're saying. Every day, every week, we're talking about it. There hasn't been a week gone by that something is not further, being looked further into the situation. So hopefully, we'll have a resolution that everyone would be happy with. Thank you, that's all I have to say.
Okay, at this time, we're going to recess the city council and go to the successor agency and then to the sanitary district.
Thank you. I'll call the September 23 meeting of the successor agency to order. Madam Clerk, would you like to call roll?
Member Broadwater?
Here.
Member Nguyen?
Here.
Member Fong?
Here.
Vice Chair Beard?
Here.
Chair Jones?
Here. We already did oral communications simultaneously with city council. Move on to consent items.
Move to second.
Call the vote.
Motion received, five yes votes.
We have no public hearings and no items, any matters from agency members. Seeing none, we will adjourn to sand district.
All right, Madam Clerk, please call roll.
Member Broadwater?
Here.
Member Nguyen?
Here.
Member Fong?
Here.
Vice President Beard?
Here.
President Fong?
Here. We'll move to consent items. Approval of the minutes from August 12th and August 26th. May I have a motion?
So move.
Second.
Call for vote, please.
Motion received, five yes votes.
No public hearings, items for consideration, none, any items from the board? None. We'll adjourn. Our next meeting is on Tuesday, October 28th at 6:30. Back to council.
October 14th. Oh, no, you're right, 28th. You're right. Okay, we reconvene the city council. Let's go to consent items.
Mr. Mayor, it's recommended that items 4A through 4H be acted on simultaneously unless a separate discussion is requested by a council member.
Mr. Mayor, I have a question about 4E, if I may.
You want me to pull it?
Yes, please.
Anybody issue the...
Move the balance?
Second.
Call for the vote.
Mr. Mayor? Motion received, five yes votes.
Well, let's go to 4E.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I have a question, just more of an explanation really. I want to ask the, our chief, as far as why is there an increase in the cost? I'm just concerned about perhaps, you know, a contract bleed and increase in price. So more of an explanation for the council, more of an explanation for the community.
Certainly. The reason for the requested increase in the contract with the vehicle company is because we have to change our entire vehicle platform. For years, law enforcement throughout the country has been using the Ford Crown Victoria, but the Ford Motor Company is no longer making that vehicle. So we've switched to the Ford Interceptor, which is a different type of vehicle. So as we're changing over the equipment from the old vehicle to the new vehicle, in Crown Victoria's, the equipment was transferable. As we're moving forward, and especially with the new CAD and the MCTs that we're putting into the, into the police vehicles, a lot of the mounting brackets and components have to be newly fabricated and installed, and that's causing an increase in our changeover costs.
So the reason for the increase, chief, is because when the contract was initially drafted, this was not a foreseeable switch between the Crown Vix to the new platforms.
Exactly. This is an older contract that's been renewed, but the Crown Vix, Ford Motor Company hadn't had not announced that they were no longer going to make that model.
Thank you, chief. That's all I have, your man.
Okay, let's go on. No public hearings.
We need to vote on the item.
Move the item.
Yes, I'll move it.
Call for the vote.
Second.
Motion received, five yes votes.
Okay, we have no public hearings, no commission matters, no items for consideration. Let's go to ordinances presented for second reading.
Mr. Mayor, that would be ordinance number 2845 for second reading, and ordinance of the city council, the city of Guarding Grove, amending the city's nepotism policy.
Any questions on that? Any discussion? Entertainer motion?
Move to approve.
Second.
A motion, a second, call for the vote.
Motion received, five yes votes.
Okay, let's go to matters from mayor and city council members. Discussion regarding placing hold on department transfers or promotions as requested by council members Beard and Nguyen.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, I brought this forward in connection with the management partners' report that is hopefully will be forthcoming by the next meeting. And I did not want to make this a part of the general city, but just related to the fire department. So I want to make that clear first off. And I thought, I brought this motion around and together, to get forward on to, because I think this could be an opportunity for us to step back and hold off on any management actions related to the department until we have the findings, results of the, of the report. I think it's important that we look at it closely, but in the interim, we hold off on making any actions related to promotions and transfers within the department. It gives us opportunity, like I say, to step back, look at it. We found tonight, we have some very tense and critical situations, and it's all about safety. So in the interim, until we have a final result, I think it would be best to hold off on any actions related to the fire department managerial-wise until we have an outcome or in a clear direction where we're going. So I think we should, as a council, perhaps direct the city manager to take this action of holding off on any transfers or promotions within the department.
Well, you're asking for something that's actually inborn into an ordinance, and for you to do that, you got to change the ordinance.
Okay. As the city manager, you have the direction to do that, correct? Hold off on any, taking any actions related to transfers or promotions, or at least go that direction, correct?
I would be reluctant to arbitrarily take such an action that is contrary to the code. So I'm not trying to be difficult, but I think it does raise some, some issues that our municipal code says one thing, and yet, you know, there's, there's council direction for a specific issue that would be contrary to that. So as the city manager, I'd be reluctant to, to implement such, such a direction, and I don't even know from the city attorney's perspective if, if that would even still be based on the way the code is written, if that's even allowed. So from a manager's standpoint, I would be reluctant to engage or, or set a precedent where we're varying from the code when the code is very specific as to how these decisions authorities to promote, transfer are specifically mentioned.
It's only on an interim basis until we have the findings of the, of the, of the report. That's where I'm leaning.
I understand, and I'm not trying to, to be difficult. I, I do think it raises some, some concerns about how council would, would, I wouldn't say arbitrarily, but be selective as to when and if you, you, you know, make these decisions where the code is very specific as to how those, that authority is provided. So...
Well, I...
I, I'm not disagreeing with you as to what you're seeking, but as a manager, I would be hesitant to say that because we have specific conditions that we sort of pick and choose as to when the code applies and when it doesn't. So in that regard, I, I would be hesitant to, to accept that direction that is in, in conflict with the code.
If I may, Mr. Patel. Mr. Beard, I think the manager's basically saying because of code, section 2.08100, power of appointment and removal, based on that code, the power of appointment and removal rests with the city manager and not with the city council. So I want to rephrase if, with, with your consent. I want to rephrase what, I think I know what you, your intention is. We are making a recommendation to you, Mr. Manager. With the situation at hand, we believe that the structure is not stable with a majority of the fire department employees speaking up and not having confidence in the chief. I believe that it is a time for us to make that recommend to you because of the public concern, because of the fire department personnel reaching out to the council. I know it is not within the council position or authority to do that, but tonight, by putting this on the agenda, council member Beard and I would like to make that recommendation to the city manager. The reason why is when a, I believe that when a structure is unstable, we should not have any shifting of position in the department until we resolve what's at issue, and right now at issue, it is the leadership. So until we get that, that report, until we resolve the leadership, I mean, it starts from the top and it trickles down. If we start moving people below that, it may just worsen the morale for the department. And I think with the fire department being confronted with daily experience with people's lives at hand, I think they, they need some kind of peace of mind knowing that the city is concerned about what they're saying. But I want the fire department to know that the city is not a speeding bullet. You're not going to get things right away. We have steps we have to go through in order to get to the final resolution of things. So asking the fire department, have patience in our system, in the city, have patience and confidence in our manager in resolving this, this situation. And along with council member Beard, I'm making a recommendation to the city manager to, to implement council member Beard's request.
Councilwoman Nguyen, in that context, I will accept your recommendation and factor that into obviously the, the very complex situation that we're involved in.
I understand. I understand. Thank you very much, Mr. Manager.
Thank you.
Mr. Baird?
Nothing, not this time.
Mr. Dina?
I think we have enough for tonight. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, sir. I notice there's a lot of firemen out there. Thank you guys for your service. I really appreciate that, what you do for us on a daily basis. It's dangerous. Realize that whatever we decide will be in not only the city's best interest, but I think in the fire department's interest as well, too. I think you guys know that. We've talked offline between friends, so rest assured that we have everybody's interests at heart. On a lighter note, though, I want to make sure that I want to thank Mr. Mitchell, Charles, for responding so quickly to one of the flags that we're about to fly off on Main Street. I called his home, and within, I think, half an hour, Charles, you had the flags reattached. So thank you so much. And then also, before our next meeting on October 4th at 7:00 PM, Miss Guarding Grove Pageant will be taking place at Saigon Performing Arts Center over in Fountain Valley. The reason why we're moving our venue to Fountain Valley is because I think they heard we had such a great pageant here, they want to see how it's done. So that's the reason why we're moving it over there, at least for this one year. So again, it's October 4th at 7:00 PM over at the Saigon Performing Arts on the corner of Brookhurst and Enger. Yep, that's all I have. Thank you. Any items from the board? None, we'll adjourn. Our next meeting is on Tuesday, October 28th at 6:30. Back to council.
October 14th. Oh, no, you're right, 28th. Okay, we'll reconvene the city council. Let's go to consent items.
Mr. Mayor, it's recommended that items 4A through 4H be acted on simultaneously unless a separate discussion is requested by a council member.
Mr. Mayor, I have a question about 4E, if I may.
You want me to pull it?
Yes, please.
Anybody issue the...
Move the balance?
Second.
Call for the vote.
Mr. Mayor? Motion received, five yes votes.
Let's go to 4E.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I have a question, just more of an explanation really. I want to ask our chief as far as why is there an increase in the cost? I'm just concerned about perhaps, you know, a contract bleed and increase in price. So, more of an explanation for the council, more of an explanation for the community.
Certainly. The reason for the requested increase in the contract with the vehicle company is because we have to change our entire vehicle platform. For years, law enforcement throughout the country has been using the Ford Crown Victoria, but the Ford Motor Company is no longer making that vehicle. So, we've switched to the Ford Interceptor, which is a different type of vehicle. So, as we're changing over the equipment from the old vehicle to the new vehicle, in Crown Victoria's, the equipment was transferable. As we're moving forward and especially with the new CAD and the MCTs that we're putting into the police vehicles, a lot of the mounting brackets and components have to be newly fabricated and installed. And that's causing an increase in our changeover costs.
So, the reason for the increase, chief, is because when the contract was initially drafted, this was not a foreseeable switch between the Crown Vics to the new platforms.
Exactly. This is an older contract that's been renewed, but the Crown Vics, Ford Motor Company hadn't, had not announced that they were no longer gonna make that model.
Thank you, chief. That's all I have, your man.
Okay, let's go on. No public hearings?
We need to vote on the item.
Move the item.
Yes, I'll move it.
Call for the vote.
Second.
Motion received, five yes votes.
Okay, we have no public hearings, no commission matters, no items for consideration. Let's go to ordinances presented for second reading.
Mr. Mayor, that would be ordinance number 2845 for second reading and ordinance of the city council, the city of Garden Grove, amending the city's nepotism policy.
Any questions on that, any discussion? Entertained a motion?
Moved to approve.
Second.
A motion, a second, call for the vote.
Motion received, five yes votes.
Okay, let's go to matters from mayor and city council members. Discussion regarding placing hold on department transfers or promotions as requested by council members Beard and Nguyen.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, I brought this forward in connection with the management partners' report that is, hopefully, will be forthcoming by the next meeting. And I did not want to make this a part of the general city, but just related to the fire department. So, I want to make that clear first off. And I brought this motion around and together, together, forward on to, because I think this could be an opportunity for us to step back and hold off on any management actions related to the department until we have the findings, results of the report. I think it's important that we look at it closely but in the interim, we hold off on making any actions be related to promotions and transfers within the department. It gives us opportunity, like I say, to step back, look at it. We found tonight, we have some very tense and critical situations and it's all about safety. So, in the interim, until we have a final result, I think it would be best to hold off on any actions related to the fire department managerial-wise until we have an outcome or in a clear direction where we're going. So, I think we should, as a council, perhaps direct the city manager to take this action of holding off on any transfers or promotions within the department.
Well, you're asking for something that's actually inborn into an ordinance and for you to do that, you gotta change the ordinance.
Okay. As a city manager, you have the direction to do that, correct? Hold off on any, taking any actions related to transfers or promotions or at least go that direction, correct?
I would be reluctant to arbitrarily take such an action that is contrary to the code. So, I'm not trying to be difficult, but I think it does raise some issues that our municipal code says one thing and yet, you know, there's council direction for a specific issue that would be contrary to that. So, as the city manager, I'd be reluctant to implement such a direction and I don't even know from the city attorney's perspective if that would even still be based on the way the code is written, if that's even allowed. So, from a manager's standpoint, I would be reluctant to engage or set a precedent where we're varying from the code when the code is very specific as to how these decisions, authorities to promote, transfer are specifically mentioned.
It's only on an interim basis until we have the findings of the report. That's where I'm leaning.
I understand and I'm not trying to be difficult. I do think it raises some concerns about how council would, I wouldn't say arbitrarily, but be selective as to when and if you, you know, make these decisions where the code is very specific as to how those, that authority is provided. So...
Well, I...
I'm not disagreeing with you as to what you're seeking, but as a manager, I would be hesitant to say that because we have specific conditions that we sort of pick and choose as to when the code applies and when it doesn't. So, in that regard, I would be hesitant to accept that direction that is in conflict with the code.
If I may, Mr. Patel. Mr. Beard, I think the manager's basically saying because of code, section 2.08100, power of appointment and removal. Based on that code, the power of appointment and removal rests with the city manager and not with the city council. So, I want to rephrase with your consent. I want to rephrase what, I think I know what your intention is. We are making a recommendation to you, Mr. Manager. With the situation at hand, we believe that the structure is not stable with a majority of the fire department employees speaking up and not having confidence in the chief. I believe that it is a time for us to make that recommend to you because of the public concern, because of the fire department personnel reaching out to the council. I know it is not within the council position or authority to do that, but tonight, by putting this on the agenda, council member Beard and I would like to make that recommendation to the city manager. The reason why is when a, I believe that when a structure is unstable, we should not have any shifting of position in the department until we resolve what's at issue. And right now, at issue, it is the leadership. So, until we get that report, until we resolve the leadership, I mean, it starts from the top and it trickles down. If we start moving people below that, it may just worsen the morale for the department. And I think with the fire department being confronted with daily experience with people's lives at hand, I think they need some kind of peace of mind knowing that the city is concerned about what they're saying. But I want the fire department to know that the city is not a speeding bullet. You're not gonna get things right away. We have steps we have to go through in order to get to the final resolution of things. So, asking the fire department, have patience in our system, in the city. Have patience and confidence in our manager in resolving this situation. And allow the council member Beard, I'm making a recommendation to the city manager to implement council member Beard's request.
Councilwoman Nguyen, in that context, I will accept your recommendation and factor that into, obviously, the very complex situation that we're involved in.
I understand, I understand. Thank you very much, Mr. Manager.
Thank you.
Mr. Beard?
Nothing, not this time.
Dina?
I think we have enough for tonight. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, sir. I notice there's a lot of firemen out there. Thank you guys for your service. I really appreciate that, what you do for us on a daily basis. It's dangerous. Realize that whatever we decide will be in not only the city's best interest, but I think in the fire department's interest as well too. I think you guys know that. We've talked offline between friends. So, rest assured that we have everybody's interests at heart. On a lighter note though, I want to make sure that I want to thank Mr. Mitchell, Charles, for responding so quickly to one of the flags that we're about to fly off on Main Street. I called his home and within, I think, half an hour, Charles, you had the flags reattached. So, thank you so much. And then also, before our next meeting on October 4th at 7:00 PM, Ms. Garden Grove Pageant will be taking place at Saigon Performing Arts Center over in Fountain Valley. The reason why we're moving our venue to Fountain Valley is because I think they heard we had such a great pageant here. They want to see how it's done. So, that's the reason why we're moving it over there, at least for this one year. So, again, it's October 4th at 7:00 PM over at the Saigon Performing Arts on the corner of Brookhurst and Enger. Yep, that's all I have. Thank you.
Mr. Jones?
Thank you. So, on the other hand, we have some very positive and exciting things happening in the city. I'd like to urge everyone to save the date, October 12th, 2014, our very first Reimagine Garden Grove Open Streets event. It's gonna be very exciting. All the pieces are coming together after a couple of years of very hard work by a very lot of people putting their talents and time and effort and legwork into this thing. So, we have the logistics mapped out. We have a lot of very robust programming set to take place. Resist the temptation to peek at what's coming up on the gym theater wall as the mural is unfolding day by day. It will be unveiled on October 12th and we look forward to seeing everyone there. Thanks.
I have nothing. We'll recon, we'll dismiss the council until November, October the 14th at 6:30. Thank you very much.
Mr. Mayor? Mr. Mayor?